NACO, you know what that is? Northern Arizona Council of Governments. Gamma Greater Arizona Mayor's Manager, no wait, Greater Arizona Manager Association.
Or Mayor's Association, I think.
That's what I said, didn't I?
Managers.
Mayor, Mayor's Association. League Resolution Committee. Why, that's at the, that's down at the. What they call it, League City and Palace? Yeah, that's what that is. YRMC I went to last night, it's Council of Lecters Chamber, you know what that is? I know ARR, AMR. I have no idea. Has nothing to do with that, see, that's all. Yavapai.
I guess that was a good thing.
That's Fireboard Liaison.
Fireboard Liaison. Impact, what's Impact, Annie? Hi Bob, how you doing?
Hi Jack, how you guys doing?
Good.
John?
Time for this again.
And I don't know where Yavapai something, must be something to do with.
I'm sure I know what Impact is.
You, you do know what it is?
I don't know.
What's your name, Donna?
Aaron, what's Impact? Impact.
M P A C.
Oh, there it is. Thank you. He just pulled it up.
Gamma, it's down on the next one, go down. Oh, it's not there, there it is.
Rested Municipal Airport.
There you go.
Okay, cool.
Did you see that? John, look at your screen.
Yeah, never has a meeting.
They have a meeting with all this stuff going on.
Oh, okay.
With the overlay and stuff.
Okay, so we got.
The airport.
Study session. At the start of this stuff.
What's that?
I'm just trying to find where I started on here.
Thought I had the bridge. I passed. I thought you did.
Oh, okay.
Most everybody says the mayor and vice mayor should be.
Should be. And then the third person. Which has been me in the past, but it doesn't matter. I just, if I'm not on it, I'm gonna be here tomorrow at three o'clock. When did these take effect? Tonight?
Next time we have a meeting.
Alright, so I have to be here at three o'clock tomorrow afternoon.
Yes, you do.
Okay.
You're not getting out of it that easy, buddy.
Well, it's worth a shot, you know. The only one I know of is that Bob has asked to be on Rhodes Street.
Yeah, he has.
He has some experience in it and we're.
And that's, that's, like I said, these are suggested, what'd you say, John?
You can remove me then.
Oh, that makes it easy.
Yeah.
But I thought you wanted on it too.
No, no, but if Bob wants to be on, he has more experience, huh?
Okay, that's fine, that's easy.
And, yeah, he showed up at our meeting yesterday.
Hey, you know, we're doing something that's totally illegal right?
Yeah, I know.
Okay. Oh.
I didn't do it on. I didn't do it.
Yes, thank you for asking, I like your shirt.
Oh, I love my shirt.
I got a new one with buttons too.
Can't do buttons.
I usually can't, but these are big like that one.
Look, I'm not a man. I really.
Are you sure?
Last I checked.
Breathing your life maybe?
What's Danny's number, we need second opinion.
Two, three, seven, eleven thirty, no, two, three, seven, seven.
You don't even know, could you just hit the button, huh?
Well, I gotta.
That's all right. Donna and I both forgot it all day till the daughter called and said, oh, by the way, it's your forty-seventh anniversary today. Whoops.
Today is?
Yeah.
Happy anniversary.
I knew we forgot something. Yeah. Forty-seven. We're both gluttons for peace, yeah.
I'm like, why are you here? Oh. That's awesomeness.
We're both gluttons for punishment. You didn't remember either, Bob.
Oh, you didn't remember?
Nope, the daughter's called.
Me and my husband before.
The daughter called us and said, oh, by the way, you missed it again.
That's great, sorry. Ow.
What's gonna be fun? Yeah, it's gonna be a lot of public hearings and hopefully they'll go quick.
You guys could have, we have an email for FOIA request.
From who?
That report. You all.
Yeah, the electronic.
But.
You know.
It goes to. The perps.
Right.
Yeah, they're supposed to be in the chat room, I didn't look at the attachment.
Okay, because he emailed us a FOIA request.
Just so we're aware and so if we don't respond, we're the bad.
Um.
Well, I'm a bad guy.
Call this meeting to order at five oh five. Can we please have roll call?
Yes, you may, Councilmember Phillips is absent, Councilmember Shakur.
Here.
Councilmember McCafferty.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Councilmember Perkins.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gineo.
Here.
Mayor Miller.
Here.
And our town attorney Andrew McGuire is present.
All right, item two, discussion regarding Parks and Recreation Advisory Board bylaws, Cindy Thomas. Come on down.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening, I'd like to present for your discussion or review, a proposed set of bylaws for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board to replace the current bylaws. In two thousand and four, the Town Council created the Parks and Recreation Committee to advise town staff on needs through facilities and programming throughout the community. In two thousand and eight, the actual bylaws that are being used today were created. Uh, they've gone through several changes and addendums throughout the year as recent as two thousand and eighteen, which changed the membership from seven members up to nine members. In two thousand and nineteen, we began the process of looking at the bylaws, seeing what could be revamped, revised, and I really need to thank Donna Armstrong for being one of those instrumental in helping us change and actually being a part of the set that's being proposed to you this evening. Through the years, the dynamics of both the department, the town, and our citizens have changed. During our lean years, during the recession, we relied heavily on the advisory board and different organizations just to keep a recreational presence within the town. Since about two thousand and seventeen, we're kind of back up on our feet, we have full staff right now. Um, apartment's going really well. That does not mean that we do not need an advisory board, there is still a very great need for an advisory board. It just needs to be possibly restructured in a different way to meet the needs of, again, the town, the department, and the community. And as such, we would be looking at, um, quote unquote, the big picture, more at the thirty thousand feet level, looking at needs and strategic planning and what facilities might be needed in the future, what different um, staffing and programming levels, everything else that would be done more in a strategic planning um, effort rather than on a committee based. Let me go to the next one. The significant areas of change would be to obtain input from the public. Right now, there's, there is input from the public as being community members. Um, the advisory board does seek advice from their neighbors and friends. However, this would be in a much more public arena such as surveys, um, possible town hall meetings, et cetera, to truly get the pulse of the community. Again, prioritizing short-term, midterm, and long-term strategic planning. One of the major significant changes would be meeting, changing from monthly meetings to actually holding no less than two meetings a year, meaning they can meet fifty times a year if they so choose, or as little as two times a year. Um, the other changes would be only having a chair and a vice chair rather than all of the other officer positions. And the last but not least change, significant change, I should say, would be moving it from nine members back down to a five-member board so that it's just a bit more manageable. And that's it, any questions on any of that? In your packet, I believe the proposed bylaws are there also.
Go ahead.
Um, I have a question.
Of course.
Um, no less than two times per year is a little concerning for me.
Okay.
Um, what was the motivating thought behind that?
Because it truly does allow as many meetings as you wish. Um, but just specifically stating that, you know, you do have to at least meet a couple of times a year. Uh, I, I understand and I realize that there are committees, not necessarily just within our town, but committees out there that have every intention of meeting monthly, but it may be two years before they actually have a meeting. So therefore put into the bylaws that they do have to meet at least twice a year. Um, one of the meetings during the year, we would want it to be a public forum so that they can discuss with the public and get the public input as to what the recreational needs are. And at least another meeting, therefore your two meetings, would be the discussion on how to implement some of those suggestions, which would then entail generating further meetings.
Okay.
Thank you. Of course.
Bob? Question? You good? I have one on, uh, section three. Item D, it says persons eligible, eligible, sorry, my tongue don't work, to serve as a board member shall live within the town limits except three members who may reside outside the town limits. And then, uh, in an area normally served by the town's Parks and Recreation Department.
So we kept that from the previous bylaws and that it absolutely can be changed or?
But we're having a five-member board, right?
Correct, so that three absolutely should be changed.
I think the number, because then you could have the majority of them not.
Correct.
Ben Chino.
You're right, good catch.
Thank you. I do that every once in a while. Not by chance, Tom.
No, I don't have anything.
You're right.
As you know, I've been advocating for this for, prior to me getting on the council, I was on Prab. So everything's good, I loved the whole process. The only question I have is within the mission statement. It says to advise and make recommendations through staff. And then it takes talks later, they'll report. As a council, I would want to hear from the Prab at least once a year with an annual report saying, you know, this is what we've surveyed, this is what the community has expressed an interest, this demographic really is pushing for this and we're satisfying that, or whatever the details are. But I would like to hear from the membership instead of being filtered through the staff, is that possible to done, or is that how this is interpreted?
I think it could be done in several different ways, absolutely, um, we can have board members do, to do that, I think one of the reasons why we were saying go through staff is for the continuity, simply because the board members do unfortunately change more often than we would like to see them change. And possibly with this new, um, right of the bylaws, maybe the, the members will not change as frequently.
And then, I'm just looking, okay, I'm looking for the yearly report, and I, I keep, I might pass it over, is there a requirement under the?
Or it was in July.
We did have it in Ju- July and we chose to.
I, I'm, I'm not a stickler on when it is, but just once a year, I think this council should.
I, I believe that, um, with Ms. Blackmore, uh, recommendation and, and my thought process with it too is, you know, there should not necessarily be a set time, we should be coming in front of the council as frequent as we feel information needs to be relayed. Instead of being told that you have to come once a year, I, I think we should be coming, you know, once a quarter, twice a year a- as often as, as things come up that you need to be involved in or, or be aware of.
And do you anticipate or foresee the Prab, the future Prab board, now, this would go through staff, requesting fundings, i.e. for a survey, a formal survey, like I showed you before, you know, other towns have done actual surveys, online, mail, or whatever, to get legitimate community input about the recreational and leisure needs needed of their community. Do you anticipate this board pursuing that?
Quite possibly, yes. I would say anything that has to do with funding would definitely go through staff um, so that we can go through the proper process as we would with any other, um, monetary item that we normally go through.
And then the last question is, for example, pickleball courts. Do you foresee the, the Prab having input advising the council, let's say hypothetically, hey, there's an absolute need for a pickleball courts, this is where we envisioned doing it, you know, but, you know, given all the details they could, and then we would decide whether or not to continue pursuing and trying to fund it. Is that how you see this Prab working?
Yes, to an extent, as far as where to put it, things like that, no, I do not foresee this board doing that, I believe that is a staff.
Okay.
Um, decision and recommendation to council at that point. However, the need for the pickleball courts, yes, I believe that that would be a board determination, whether it be pickleball courts or dog parks or a frisbee golf course or a new swimming pool, whatever it is, but they would be receiving that information straight from the public, not just pulling something out of the air saying, we believe that this is something that we need in this town.
That's all good, I mean, th- th- this is all good, I just, I want to hear from the, the citizens.
Of course.
At least once a year, instead of, because we hear from you all the time, we hear from Scott. I want to hear, me personally, I don't know how the rest of you feel, but I feel, I want to hear from the community members.
And Mayor, Council, if I may, that actually came through me. Um, it was my suggestion that staff should always be in charge of anything that comes to council. And I believe in our discussion, we, we said that the board chair would of course be there and be able to provide it, but who's actually responsible for the report would be the staff member, but having the board member there to be able to um, speak and coordinate that stuff, so we absolutely would want that there, but, um, to have a staff member that's responsible and in charge of bringing that before council.
Okay, Sherry, you have anything done there?
Yeah, slam. Yeah, yeah, well, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Okay, so, um, Prab's been fun the past few years, what, um, are they looking into, okay, let me rephrase this. The mutter, right? Broke my heart.
Okay.
Exaggeration. Um, is Prab gonna be more involved in planning events, or is it working with economic development, how's that gonna work?
So, in the process and, and when I was talking about the dynamics, again, when the town was, was lean, they did do, um, they did help with events, they did sponsor events, they did coordinate events. Um, they planned the events. That was never in their bylaws, their bylaw specifically stated to be the advisors of Parks and Recreation. Um, and I, I truly believe that the board needs to get back to basics and do that and allow staff to do their jobs, to help staff determine what those jobs might be, but to allow staff to, to coordinate and facilitate those such events.
Anything else? No issues other than the things we brought up? All right, I guess we're done.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item three, review and discussion regarding rosters for council subcommittees and entity reports. This is Aaron and, uh, before we start, I, I want to expl- ask that these committees, we need, if you're a chair of a committee, when you have a meeting, you need to come in and give us a report, and we can do that during the, uh, updates portion of, on the agenda. Um, but I just think it's important because the committees are getting the information, but that information needs to come back to council. So, and that would handle partly what you were talking about with Prab. So, just, just so you know, So just, just so you know, my opinion. Okay, are you doing this?
I'm gonna tag you here in a second. So good evening, mayor, vice mayor and council members. After each regular election, council reviews and updates the rosters for council subcommittees and staff and council review those appointments to various outside entities for corrections and or updates. Uh, staff and Mayor Miller would like to review these rosters during the study session tonight to give you all an opportunity um, to request a change in position if so desired. And then staff will make those said change requests and bring this item back to the next council meeting for a vote on that. And I know Cindy had a couple of things that, um, she wanted to mention first before we go into a little more detail.
All right. All right. Good evening, mayor and council. So before you go, um, and have your discussion on staffing these subcommittees, I wanted to talk to you a little bit about, um, some discussions that I've had with staff. So we have a number of subcommittees and after a few discussions, in some instances, we believe that utilizing subcommittees may no longer be the most effective way of operating. After many lengthy discussions, again, we wanted to bring these things before you for your discussion. And, um, let me give you some examples, and I think it speaks to the point that the mayor made that the council's not always getting the information that some of the subcommittees were getting. So, um, these are the ones that we, um, wanted you to discuss tonight or consider. So the finance subcommittee, the last time that committee met was in October of 2021. And when I looked back over the purpose of it, um, it was to review financial matters coming before the council. And we would like, um, for you to consider and discuss whether that is the most effective way of doing things in this one. So, um, it may be, um, or we believe it's more effective to provide the information to the council as a whole at a work session, rather than just three members of the council getting, um, information. We believe we could provide that to the council as a whole and it would be a more effective way of doing things. Um, public safety committee, again, last time they met was in August of 2019. Their purpose is to review public safety matters, not within the purview of the Rosen streets. So I'm guessing, I'm not sure, but maybe that's speed limits or something like that. And that's more technical in nature. And again, the same discussion we'd like you to have. Um, we'd like to be able to provide information to the whole council rather than a subset. Or at least for you to consider that. Economic development, they have met, um, more frequently. Um, their purp- the last time was in August of last year. Um, they help, their purpose is to help the town create a sustainable economy. Um, in practice, after, um, speaking with the team, it really has been more informational in nature. And I think it's great information. I think, um, the last one was really a good one too, but, um, we would like the whole council to be able to hear that. And, um, lastly, the UDO, which was really an ad hoc committee, which we have discussed before, to review issues and concerns, make recommendations. And these duties have actually already been given are actually a power of the planning and zoning commission. So, um, that's already being taken care of. So we'd just like some discussion and direction. Whether keeping with the subcommittees is something you'd like to do or would you rather have those kind of things at work sessions? And with that, um, that's all I have.
Yeah.
Should it?
So I don't know, did you want to discuss or you want to move into like the vacancies?
We can handle this while, while it's here, let's, let's take care of it. Um, comments on what you just said.
I think with your recommendation that the chairs come to council with what they've obtained in the meetings is fair and keeping the appointments and that way all of council's still in the know and, um, we still have a insight on what's going on.
Okay. He's thinking. Let's go over here. Cherry?
I agree. I don't think it's, there's really, uh, I can't speak for economic development or public safety, but I don't, I honestly, we already talked at details about finance. So I, I don't see why three people should sit and get a little bit more of information. I think you could abolish the finance without any, uh, heartburn to this town at all.
Yeah, no problem at all. Back to you.
Yeah, I agree with.
I'm a good with it too. So.
I'm good. We can't make any decision, but there you go. I don't know how you're gonna handle this, but.
Yeah. So we'll bring this back to the next council meeting for that decision on, and let me just clarify finance. That's where we're looking at. And then leaving public safety, economic development. And we'll remain with the UDO as standard.
Finance and econom- economic development.
Well, but the UDO is already, the UDO rewrite, that's already being done even more thoroughly than the UDO subcommittee would do it through the planning and zoning. They actually do probably a more thorough job than the U- UDO subcommittee. I mean, is there any argument against that?
As long, as long as their text would come into us and let us know what's going on.
I agree.
So I'm not clear. Are, are you saying you want to keep subcommittees for them or you don't want to keep subcommittees for them?
I wanted, my, my position is do away with at least the UDO and the finance. I can't speak for the other two because I've never really been involved in those, so I don't know anything about them.
You want to keep UDO and?
No.
No.
Do all.
Do it. Okay. Yeah. I, I agree with, I agree with.
I think all, I think all four of them. Economic development as well. We haven't had a meeting in, when's the last meeting we had? August. But we don't really.
And the public safety, the last meeting was August of 2019 on public safety.
I don't even know what they do.
So I think we can get rid of them.
Annie, you want to keep economic development?
I would like to keep economic development. My mic's not on. I would like to keep economic development. I understand it's more, it's been more informational, but it's been extremely helpful. Um, and knowing what is going on as far as, um, the possible economic developments. Um, I, I, I don't necessarily know that it needs, I would like Maggie's opinion on that actually. Um, but UDO, I'm okay with, um, doing away with that and finance. You really, you want, you, you're not good with economic development anymore?
Since August, we haven't had one over and we get our updates from Maggie. So I think we're okay.
I go to.
We'll still get, we'll.
I'll go to keep it.
We're, we can still get our updates from economic development, but it'll just be in presentation form. She'll come up with the council or the dais, what do you call that thing?
Podium.
Podium.
Podium and tell us all instead of telling just a couple. And then you'll have to bring the information back to the council.
Well, the chair would still be responsible for making its report as well as what Maggie had for us. So I don't have a problem with keeping economic development. Maybe we get the information twice, but sometimes we need it twice.
Most every day.
I'm new at this, so.
Okay.
I know public safety hasn't met in a long time, but that was like the kickoff of the PD building last time we met. I think it was about dog issues, actually, as a matter of fact.
It was.
It was about dog issues. That killed public safety.
Yes, sir.
I do have a question. If the subcommittee is scheduled, why aren't they followed? Why are they canceled all the time?
Fair question.
Who can answer that?
Um, mayor, council, uh, when they're, when they're canceled, it means there's no, um, pending issues to be discussed.
Find it hard to believe that in a town, there's no pending issues. Cause I, I, I get things about subcommittees and then I get another information that it's canceled. So if we have subcommittees scheduled, we should have them. And if we come in and say hi or whatever, then, I mean, it shouldn't be canceled. There shouldn't be a subcommittee that hasn't met in two years.
And I think that's just wrong.
I think that's the purpose of what we're talking about is doing away with that. So we won't have that issue.
Yeah, mayor and council, because to have a meeting when there's no, um, subject, I mean, it involves a lot of work. Staff members have to take minutes. They're required. The, um, the clerk's office has to post them and then we have to keep records, all of that. So it's a lot of, um, extra work that would go into, um, having a meeting if there weren't, um, things to be discussed on the agenda.
So if you had a subcommittee scheduled every three months, there's gotta be something. I mean, there's a task to be.
Right, but she, but Maggie can bring it up during our council meetings and avoid, like Cindy said, avoid all the extra work needed. And still get all the information. But like, Tom was saying, we need.
Some subcommittees are like sewer and water. We go into a lot of technical detail. Not every time though, because we'll get one done and maybe we need it, we don't need one right away. So you do need that smaller group because you are getting into a very technical stuff. Roads and streets, I've only been to a couple just to watch, but they do a lot of the similar stuff. And then that way we, they, that subcommittee could kind of narrow down the scope of what the whole council is going to deal with for the next meeting or so. Because sometimes you got to spread them out.
Okay. I went to my first roads and street yesterday. And they covered a lot of stuff and Tom, I can't remember when they said the last time they met.
I think it was in April.
You're talking roads and street?
Yeah. On the town engineer, bringing stuff forward for the roads and streets committee. So I don't want to send Frank up on the noose, but that's where we get our information to have it. I agree with you that maybe a quarterly schedule should be there just in case.
Right.
I don't have a problem with that at all.
Because a lot of stuff was covered last night. Like I said, that's my first time. But there was a lot of information that was covered.
It probably won't be your last.
I'm here for punishment.
Anything else? Okay. So what's? What, what did we not decide? Cause we can't make a decision.
I enjoy meeting with Maggie and economic development and, and finance also, but I like saving time and money for the town.
I'm a fan of checks and balances between staff and council with having these subcommittees.
I'm still an advocate of doing away with the UDO and the finance.
I'm okay with those two.
Okay. But then you have to set a schedule and you have to stick to it.
Much as possible, yeah.
Well, the UDO is on, on demand and that's, uh, P and Z issue.
Um, and sorry.
What?
Roads and streets, I don't think there was a ness- a meeting necessary, um, because the, the budget came forth and then the roads and streets were already laid out what was going to be. So I don't think a meeting in between was necessarily called for, you know, um, doing like, if it's not necessary, I understand like, okay, public safety hasn't been since 2019. We probably don't need it, you know, like we're really not doing anything, um, other than talking about dog issues. So, um, I, I understand where you're coming from on that. Um, but in regards to the roads and streets, once the budget goes forward and whatnot and it's laid out with what roads and streets are going to be repaired throughout the next year, I don't think unless there's like an emergency that we would need to be a part of with roads and streets, that a meeting would be required until it would be called for. Does that make sense?
It makes sense, but the guys last night, like I said, it was my first time there, so I don't know what has transpired. The guys last night were saying how it's been so long since they had a meeting that a lot of them have forgot what was going on. And they themselves felt like it was too long in between meetings. Now, I'm not saying you have to have one every six months. But, uh, I mean, they covered a lot of stuff last night. And, um, there was, uh, some things were brought up where they were asked opinions on what roads should be put ahead of other roads and streets. So that would be new information.
But I, I think the, why they're, why we're looking to eliminate these four is because those are the ones that are always canceled. They don't have anything. And so they're not addressed. And I understand what you're saying about meetings. Yes, if it's a ongoing situation and meet more. And maybe roads and street needs to set court leads or whatever, but like Annie told you, they, they prepare up to the budget time and then what they decide happens. And then it comes up again pre-budget and they prepare for the next year.
Yeah, they covered five years.
Yeah, yeah.
But then things come up.
Well, sure. Something, something comes up, you can always have a meeting, you know? Okay. Okay.
But they, we haven't decided anything.
Yeah, we, we decided that finance and public safety is gone.
There was discussion.
Or discussion, we're discussing.
Listening it.
Yeah. We haven't decided. We discussed it. Sorry.
Thank you. So, so we're discussing the possibility of eliminating UDO.
UDOs.
Public safety. Okay. It's like.
Public safety. Finance.
Public safety.
But we talked about.
I really do want to keep economic development.
Okay.
I thought we all agreed to that. Or, you know.
I mean, I'll kick you off. You don't have to be on it.
No. I'll stay on, I'll stay on and enjoy meeting with you, Maggie, but a lot of time and.
Okay, but whoever the chair is going to be this year needs to bring, I don't, if we're going to have E, ED, that's fine, but then the report needs to come to council.
You the chair?
Mm-hmm.
Whoever the chair is.
Annie is the chair.
Well, now they, you know, now is the time of year when we, after we do our appointments, their first meeting is the reappoint chair and all that.
Yep.
So.
So that would be Tom or Eric.
All right. So we got that. You good?
I'm good. Thank you.
Three out, one on.
Thank you.
Maybe.
One on, three out.
All right. So with that, um, our membership is going to change possibly depending on the discussion now for each of the subcommittees. Um, we'll start with the appointment subcommittee. Currently we have one vacancy, so this is an opportunity, um, I believe you guys have in front of you some of, a starting point from the mayor of, um, suggestions to place on this. But I will allow the mayor to kind of, uh, go off the discussion of maybe on appointments. Who would like to be on that? Where we sit on the members for that.
Okay. I made this up, I don't know, three, two, couple of months ago, and it was just a starting point. I wonder if anybody understands that? It's not, I'm not deeming that this is what happens. This is just a suggestion. Am I running this or you?
Um, I don't have that in front of me. So if you want to.
So for appointments committee, um, is there any suggestions different than what we have? What is on this list? Would anybody else like to be on that's not on?
On this list currently.
The one in front of us or the one on the screen?
That's what we're looking at.
The one.
I was looking at this.
Mr. Mayor, I do have it. I'm sorry. It's the one that looks like this. This is the starting.
I, I suggested myself, Eric and Annie Perkins. Uh, because with discussion with, uh, our town clerk, we revise that mayor and vice mayor should be on that.
That's right. Yeah.
I'm good with it.
I'm good with that. Oh. Annie's good with that.
I'm very happy with that.
Okay. And so then we'll move on to, um, economic development. So currently we have Annie on there, um, Eric and Tom, and we will take suggestions from Mayor Miller on the positions.
Mine's the same. I, there's no change on this list that I made. Is there any changes needed? Anybody one off or one on? Okay.
Okay. So we will not worry about finance, will not worry about public safety, um, roads and streets. This is actually only requires two council members instead of three. So currently we have, um, council member Armstrong is seated.
And, uh, my list has, uh, I did have, uh, John, but John said he would like to wrinkle, what's the word? Relinquish to Bob if Bob want, because Bob would like to be on that. And then I had Cherry as alternate.
You good with that, Bob?
I'm good with it.
Yeah. And I'm good with it. Yeah. And I want to get off. So that's fine.
He has to be on in a. He has to be on and attended yesterday's meeting. That's a good idea.
Okay, and then water and utilities. Currently, it's council member McCafferty and Vice Mayor Grineo. And then uh Mayor Miller had some suggestions.
On my list, I have uh adding Bob on there too, but I had Cherry on some of the committees that got eliminated, so I don't know if we should maybe Cherry, would you like to be on that one?
On which one?
Water and utilities.
That's fine.
Bob, you okay with that?
I'm fine.
Okay.
All right, so then we'll move on to the entity appointments.
These people you don't you don't know about before you get elected and then you're like, oh, I have to serve on all these too.
So if you flip it over, uh Mayor has some suggestions on these as well. So on the Upper Verde River Watershed Protection Coalition, um that is one council member for the representative with an alternate. Currently, the representative is vacant with the alternate of council member Armstrong. And it looks like um Mister Miller has requested as a representative with an alternate as council member McCafferty. Ready for that?
I'm I'm good with that, yes.
You wanted on that?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
All right, and then the tack, um the representative currently is the assistant town engineer with the town engineer as the alternate.
Oh.
Um, he has to be good with that.
Mayor Councilmember, actually, we have a change to that one. So the representative will be our um water advisor. And the alternate will be the assistant town engineer.
I like that.
Looked out.
Mark Holmes.
All right, and then to NAMO, um currently it's Mayor Miller as the representative and council member McCafferty. And it looks as though the suggestion is to remain the same.
I'm good with that.
So can I confirm that the next tack for NAMO is going to be the same? Okay. And then uh Simpo. Looks like council member Armstrong is our representative and council member McCafferty is our alternative or alternate. Yeah, it looks like that.
I would, if Bob, if you're okay, since it's road related stuff, would you like to be on that in lieu of me?
He's an alternate, so if Tom can't go, then you would go.
Okay.
But you do attend the meetings a lot via Zoom or whatever, so you can keep up with the issues. It's dealing with countywide transportation issues.
Or in person, right?
You can, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so you're good with that?
Yeah, cool.
Perfect.
So he owes me.
Mm hmm.
Okay, so you owe me.
I'd rather owe you than beat you out of it.
As long as you owe me, I'm never broke.
All right, and then we're going to move on to NACOG. Um currently, Mayor Miller is our representative and our alternate is Vice Mayor Grineo, and it looks the suggestions to stay the same on that one.
Yes.
Okay, government, that makes sense.
And then Gamma, uh Mayor Miller and then alternate council member Perkins. And it looks like uh Mayor Miller to be remain the representative and possibly uh alternate go to Vice Mayor Grineo. Good with that? Y R M C, currently Mayor Miller is our representative with our alternate as council member Perkins. And it looks like the alternate to change a request of Vice Mayor Grineo. Just want to make sure council member Perkins is.
Annie.
Well, I'm just wondering why you're kicking me out of everything already. I mean, I just moved seats last month. I reckon.
You're on the other side.
I know.
And it's open for discussion.
No, it's good. Are you good?
Good.
You got a lot of, you got, your name's down there a lot. Fine.
All right, so then the Chamber of Commerce, we have a vacant for the representative and alternate set right now is Vice Mayor Grineo. Um, looks like suggestion for Representative Vice Mayor Grineo, alternate uh council member McCafferty.
Personally, I think Annie would be better than me because she knows more about the chamber than I'll ever know.
I'm not in favor of that.
Darn, I thought the sweetness would make it work. Cherry, don't be laughing.
Cherry. Cherry, you want to be alternate for that or no?
It's for the Chamber of Commerce.
I can.
Okay.
It's it's a ton of fun.
I don't do.
I don't owe you.
It's the middle of the day.
Do you hear that?
All right, A M R R P. Currently, representative is uh Town Manager Blackmore and the alternate is our H R Director Laura Carrie Caucus. And along here, it looks like we're requesting to say the same. And then Y C T, our representative is our H R Director Laura, and then alternate is our H R Analyst Tiffany. And it looks like we're going to request to say the same on those ones. Fireboard liaison currently is Mayor Miller for representative and then alternate council member Perkins. Looks like uh suggestion to change alternate to Vice Mayor Grineo.
Annie, you want to stay on that?
I I don't mind.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Thanks. So leave Annie?
Annie.
Leave Annie?
Yeah.
Yeah, Annie's on there.
Still got two more years.
Hey, Impact is currently Mayor Miller for representative and then alternate uh council member Perkins. And it looks like suggested change to make representative council member Perkins and then the alternate council member Shacker.
Okay.
I'm okay.
And then last but not least, Yavai County Unified Emergency Management Advisory Committee. I cannot say that acronym, so that's why I said that. Representative uh Chief Wen and the alternate Lieutenant Chapman, and it looks like it's going to stay the same for that. We are good.
Okay.
All right, so we will take this back, um make these suggested changes and you'll see this at the next council meeting.
All right.
Thank you very much.
All right, is there anything else concerning that? Then I'll, I think I'll take a motion to, yeah, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion adjourn.
Okay. Motion's made, second half favor.
All right.
I will adjourn until six.
What do I get myself?
You ran for office. No one tells you all the fun.
Why? No, I knew. Yeah, Tom told me.
I know.
It's gonna have all these. The first thing I wanted to do on was water. I'm gonna be doing a lot of time.
Simple request that I stay on there.
See, I am. It's like this decision was already made before the meeting started.
Call the meeting to order.
Guys could grab a seat if you wish. Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Can you please rise for the pleasures of the legions?
Our pleasure is to the land, the United States of America. And to the calling for which standards, what nation, what other God, this world, the great being, justice for all.
Thank you. Please have roll call.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Phillips. Councilmember Shakur.
Here.
Councilmember McCafferty.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Councilmember Perkins.
Here.
Vice Mayor Grineal.
Here.
Mayor Miller.
Here.
And our town attorney Andrew McGuire is present.
Introductions, presentations, and proclamations to a presentation of certificates of appreciation recognition for outstanding volunteerism to the Town of Chino Valley Animal Shelter volunteers. Terry, it says.
Yes, I'm going to, Mayor and Council, good evening. For the benefit particularly of our newer council members, we started a program last year. We wanted to formally recognize and have a moment before Mayor and Council for our outstanding volunteers. We have so many of them that serve our, our, our community and as well as businesses. So we'll be coming to you periodically at council meetings and recognizing those with certificates. So tonight, we are recognizing the many volunteers, only about five of them are here this evening, that help the animal shelter. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mary Lee.
I can read from here though, right? Okay, so the certificate reads, for your time, energy, and enthusiasm volunteering at the Chino Valley Animal Shelter, your tireless efforts not only support the diverse needs of the stray and owner surrendered animals in our care. Excuse me. But also overall animal control and animal shelter operations. As a valued volunteer, you help with every imaginable task from walking dogs to cleaning kennels and helping with paperwork. We know we cannot provide the high level of care to our animals or service to the public without our committed volunteer base. Your dedication helps us provide a safe, caring environment for the dogs and cats. Sorry. Of waiting return to their owners or while finding their forever home. We thank you for your outstanding community spirit and your enduring contribution to the quality of a life of both our two-legged and four-legged residents. Sorry. Alright, so we're gonna give out the certificates to the people that are here. So.
Hang on, Mary Lee, let them get your handheld mic so they can hear you at home.
Okay.
Please.
Yeah, so all of our volunteers are listed here on the screen. Um, we have quite a few. Some of them come in weekly and then we have some that come in monthly. And then some are on the, on the list. They come in just when we really, really need them or they come in when they can, so. But we do have a few here tonight that we would like to recognize. So is this one here tonight? Okay, Daniel Ray, come on up. Gotta get a picture. Jeannie Dunk.
And has her shirt on?
Thank you.
Oh, here you can be the rose between the orange.
There you go.
Not above her shirt though. Thank you. Thank you.
Jeannie.
Thank you. Nora Zortman?
Thank you so much for all your help.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Alright, Steve and Laura Williams.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you guys so much.
Is there anybody else here that volunteers at the shelter that we did not call up? Alright, thank you. Thank you.
Alright, thank you to the volunteers. Uh, item two B, presentation of the APS Solar Communities Program by APS staff. Maggie, it says. Maggie is here.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Tonight, we are going to be presenting the APS Solar Communities Program to you in partnership with APS. And Scott's gonna follow up with some of the logistics on it. So just real quick, I'm gonna introduce it and let APS take it away. Uh, so the Solar Communities Program was developed to help APS' vision to create a sustainable energy future for Arizona. Um, it provides free solar-covered parking structures that will be owned and maintained by APS for 20 years. In return, APS provides a bill of credit to our customers. For government and municipal customers, the bill of credit is based on the solar system size and sold at the location. And. I'm actually going to refer to Scott on this one and let APS kind of go from here and then Scott. And this is Monique with APS.
Good evening, Mayors and Councilmembers. So the diagrams that you have in front of you are two options. Uh, one of the options on the left is the maximum capacity, if you will, for what we can provide you guys from a system perspective. We did also talk in the lower-left corner, you had already set up structures to apply your own solar. And we've looked at retrofitting that to include that in our program as well, if that's something that the town would like to do. We did receive some feedback that you potentially would like to remove the two structures that are directly in front of the new building. So that is what option two is showing you. Um, there is a significant credit difference between the two options and I'm happy to provide that information if you would like that as well. We also know, Mayor Miller, that you had questions about the asphalt and then the new warranty that would be with that. I wanted to let you know I did talk to the installer and they are looking to do boring at all the locations for trenching and working with your asphalt company to see what they can do to warrant that warranty. Do you have any other questions for APS?
Any questions?
Okay. Just one, just one. What was the, I, I didn't hear you quite articulate the difference between option one and A as I look at it on the schematic here. I see there's fewer panels on option two.
That's correct.
And what was the reason for that?
We had just received some questions about the potential to remove the structures directly in front of the new police station because of aesthetics. And so we wanted to provide you both options and what that would look like. And again, there would be a different bill credit based off of which system size that you choose.
What would be the kilowatt loss with option two?
It wouldn't be a kilowatt per se, but the credit would be a $686 bill credit versus an $1,100 bill credit on the monthly basis.
That's $500 difference and that would be $7,000.
Quite a big difference, but we understand the efforts that were put in to put that building in and the beauty of the, the front of it. So we can understand if you wouldn't want to have anything in front of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm happy to answer any other questions, but I think.
I think, I think explanation of what she's talking about, removing the shades, are, are they already up?
No, there's, there's no existing shades.
Anybody, I don't think anybody knows what's going on here.
So, uh, an option one, maximum coverage, it, it includes the, uh, the shades that look like an L on the bottom left-hand corner of the drawings. Those are existing, uh, parking canopies. Everything else that's a straight line to the upper right or far right of that are new canopies that we be installed as part of the solar project that's paid for and maintained by APS. But they would, uh, they would basically work with our existing shade canopies, the L-shaped ones, and install on top of that. And option two, the differences that the two linear runs directly in front of the new PD facility would not get shade canopies and therefore we would not get the solar on top of those. Otherwise, they're identical.
And they're wanting to, uh, to remove them due to the presentation of the building?
Visual aesthetics, yes.
Okay, any other questions down there? Danny, bub? How about y'all?
Just, do we have a conceptual design of what the aesthetics would be loss? I mean, I, I can't envision the aesthetics being that dramatic that we would be willing to throw away $7,000 a year, times how many ever years that exist.
I'm gonna go ahead and answer that for him if you don't mind. Um, because it will block the entire front, like view of the police, the new PD that we're putting in. We're trying to avoid that.
You can't, you can't see it now when you're driving because of this building. So what's the loss? Only if you get between the building and the police department, do you see the aesthetics you potentially lose. When I drive down the road, I see this and then you see the top part of the police station. So what do I care about? I mean, is it really that dramatic that we're willing to throw away $7,200 a year? I mean, is aesthetics that important?
Um, I think that, so all we're doing tonight is just presenting the idea.
Right.
And the solar communities program. And we can certainly discuss those details later. They were just trying to provide you with two different options because there was discussion about not blocking our new beautiful police station. And also whether or not, you know, the extra few hundred a month is worth doing that. So right now, we're just presenting the idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is that it? All in, all done? Okay, moving on. Uh, call the public, public, I can't talk.
Call to the public is an opportunity for the public to address the council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the council that is not on the agenda. Public comment is at the discretion of the council and not required by law. Individuals are limited to speak for three minutes. Yielding of time will not be permitted. The total time for call to the public may be up to 30 minutes per meeting. Council action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, scheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date, or responding to criticism. Disrespectful behavior will not be tolerated. This includes loud outbursts, profanity, and disruptive discussions among our audience. And our first speaker comment card is Debbie Pomeroy.
You okay if I stood out here? You wouldn't see me behind you.
Just bring the microphone over so they can hear you at home.
Here we go.
No. I don't think it is.
My name's Debbie Pomeroy. I've lived in Chino Valley since 1992. Um, I am here to ask you to please table the dog ordinance until the community can look at it.
I'm sorry, Mayor. Um, this is a item that we have on the agenda and will need to be discussed at that time.
Okay.
Okay, next we have, oh heavens, I can't read that. Jer, Jerlin? Jocelyn? Jerelyn?
I came here because.
Please talk in the microphone. We, right, right in front of you there. Thank you very much.
My voice was loud enough. I came to talk to you about getting another. What? Alright. I came to talk to you about getting another one or two grocery stores here. Um, we've got a tremendous growth in population and most of us have to go into Prescott where all of our money is going. Taxes and everything goes to text, goes to Prescott. And we think that, um, the infrastructure, what we understand from what I've been told is that these grocery stores won't come in unless Chino pays for the infrastructure. And our taxes over a period of time would, I think, more than cover that. It's short-sighted not to have it here. We need at least one more grocery store, maybe two. And I'd like you to put your pedals to the metal and get us those things, because personally, I'm tired of spending the gas and the time to go all the way into Prescott when I don't need to, we can do it here. Safeway doesn't have enough of anything to take care of all the people around here at Christmas. I didn't have any salary because it was all gone, and that was two days before Christmas. I went back the next day and they still had no salary. And that's a commodity that most women use for their table, for whatever. So you please consider that and get us this that we've asked for many, many, many times. We really, really need it, and we don't need to keep expending all that gas and all of our tax money to go to Prescott. Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe that's all we have for call to the public.
Okay. Current events summaries and reports. Status reports by Mayor and Council regarding current events. I have nothing, how about down there, Bob will start then. Annie?
Law enforcement appreciation, three days, so thank you, guys, ladies.
Same, good job, Chief, at the, last night. That was last night, right? Been a long day. Thank you. Sherry? John? Nope, nope, okay. And then status report by Town Manager Cindy Blackmore regarding town accomplishments and current or upcoming projects.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, I do have one item. And what I would, I would like, Laura, if you could just step up a little bit, I know she doesn't want to say anything. But our very own Laura Curia-Caucus has recently graduated from the International City Managers Association High Performance Leadership Academy. The Performance Leadership Academy is a 12-week online program created to equip local government professionals with leadership skills in some major areas, including organizational development and change management, negotiation and collaboration, effective communication, you know, she's a great communicator, and how to deliver increased value from high-performance management. I'm really proud of the work she had to put into that on top of all her duties to step up and enter that program. I know she had to go on Fridays, which is not a normal workday, but she put a lot of work into it, and that increases not only her professionalism, but also the professionalism in our organization. So I'm really proud of her, and I know you'll join me in congratulating her, very impressive accomplishment, she's truly an asset to this team. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you, Laura. Is that it? Okay. Consent agenda items, all those items listed below are considered to be routine and may be enacted by one motion. Any council member, maybe your request to remove an item from the consent agenda to be considered and discussed separately. And I think you want to pull something, right?
Item 5A regarding the chapter 90 dog relating to.
Anything else? Sherry? How about over here? Anything you want? Make a motion to approve to set agenda 5B. Second, motion made and seconded, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, let's talk about 5A, consideration and possible action to approve ordinance number 2023-926, amending Chino Valley Town Code, Chapter 90, relating to animals.
Mayor, Police Chief will be presenting that, and I believe they presented, they have a slide as well to give you the information.
Okay.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, because Merrily loves to talk so much. I, I offered to, you know, help her out with this, even though she did all the hard legwork on it, so. When Erin gets our, or Sarah gets our slide. There we go, one slide, Mayor. So our ordinance was revised back in 2017. Over the last four to five years, we've incurred a few issues with enforcement. And it basically boils down to the three things here we'll talk about. I know you see a lot of red lines and things in your copy, and, you know, after we get done, it has to go to Mr. McGuire's shop, and they do all their lawyer cool stuff to it, so a lot of what you see is just things being moved around and renumbered and stuff. But the, the three main things we're dealing with are excessive noise. We had 80 calls last year regarding barking dogs, which is probably our number one type of call we respond to. And with the current ordinance, there's no true definition of time, it's more of in the person's opinion, so, you know, the animal control officers use kind of a rule of thumb of the 15 minutes, but we have nothing in writing. Makes it very difficult to prosecute cases. And of course, we always start with education with the person, and we start with warnings, and then we eventually end up with citation if the problem's not solved. But it's a pretty serious problem, and as the town grows, especially as people are living closer to each other, you know, you don't want to be on the receiving end of that, you know, that barking dog all night. So it is, it's a problem for us, it's a problem for the community, and we're trying to address that. Give our officers more teeth, give the prosecutor and the judges a better way to make their decision on whether to prosecute and whether the person is responsible for the nuisance noise. So that's all we've tried to do there is kind of define that better. Then we, the other one was the, or the second one is the leash. This is basically a memory park problem. I understand that our dog trainers, dogs, you know, they're under control. I mean, they could put their dog down, I could put a T-bone stake in front of it, it won't move. But there's a lot of people out there that think their dogs are under control, they're on these retractable leashes. And we've had a lot of problems with lunging at children, or another dog comes by, and, you know, those things will go 10, 12, 14 feet. So all we're doing is trying to limit that to six feet. And basically, like I said, it's a big memory park problem, because that tends to be where a lot of people congregate to walk their dogs, and a lot of kids go to play, that kind of thing, so.
And with the trainers.
There's, there's exclusion.
Yeah, there's exclusions, and we didn't touch any of those, so we didn't touch any of that. So with the dog trainers and, and the dogs that people have, what the caring dogs form, the
Therapy dogs.
Therapy dogs and stuff, we didn't touch any of that, so. Just basically your simple dog that is not on a leash.
So it'd be like my dog, I consider my dog under control until anything gets near it, and then it's, you know, it's out of control, so. We think six feet is sufficient, you know, in the park with the number of people, the number of dogs and things that are over there. Again, we use common sense, I know people think we're trying to, to make everything black and white, but, you know, our officers and our animal control officers use a lot of common sense. And again, like I said, that they see things, they try to educate people, and that normally takes care of the problem. If not, we'll move to the warning and to the citation. And the only other thing of substance we changed is how long we keep impounded dogs. Currently, we have to hold them for 10 days, which means we're feeding them, watering them, and caring for them. The county does five days, and we think that's sufficient. If you're a responsible dog owner and you haven't missed your dog in five days, you probably shouldn't have a dog. And there again, we're a no-kill shelter, we're not trying to, you know, put these dogs down or anything, they're gonna be adopted. But it's just five days less that we're feeding them and caring for them. And I can't say it's never happened, because it probably has, but it's very, 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 very rare that someone's gonna come in after the five days and, you know, try to claim a dog that's been missing, so. That's the three things of substance that we've changed, so we're here to answer, well, Merrily's here to answer questions and.
The other thing about the impounded dogs is the reason why we went to five days instead of 10 is because we only have 12 kennels. So we get filled up very quickly, and we need, we need to lessen those days so we can get them adopted to families.
Let's go ahead and start on this side, Sherry, you got anything else? John?
Good, good presentation, and I spoke with you yesterday, and you were very insightful. Everything you've done, I'm a full supporter. My only concern is, when we talk about the teeth, the dog noise nuisance behavior. And my concern is 15 minutes, 15 minutes continuous. I understand the intent, and I'm all supportive behind it, but if a dog goes 12 and a half minutes and breathes for five, you gotta start it all over. And it, we really, it doesn't give you the teeth, because it's still an annoying dog that took a five-second break.
John, can you please tell us where you are, what page?
Well, on this one, it'd be section B, it just goes down to the
What page?
Oh, 30, page 30.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, and after, after you spoke with Merrily, she did talk to Mr. Goodman, I believe. And he, and he was okay with removing that word if that would help.
Right, but I want to give
I understand a dog might take a breath and
Right, right, I do, but at the same time, I want the community, as a dog owner myself, to have parameters to understand, when is it excessive? I don't want to have to leave it to interpretation to a third person. I want to know, hey, if my dog is going for the most part over a 15-minute period of time at 10:00 at night till 8:00 in the morning, for a vast majority of that 15-minute time, I've got a problem that I might have to deal with.
It's really difficult to nail it down to, you know, something that doesn't require some discretion.
Right.
And that's kind of where we're at right now, is we don't have anything really to gauge it by, and they were okay with removing that word out and leaving it a little more open.
Mayor, council member, one of the things to keep in mind when you have that kind of provision, even if it's just excessive period of time, remember that our officers are, that discretion is part of their job every day. You know, the speed limit in the state, people think it's what's on the sign, but it's not, it's a reasonable and prudent speed. And so the officers are making a call every single time they do a traffic stop on whether or not it was reasonable and prudent, regardless of what was posted. So that's part of their job, it's part of the discretion they have to handle. So if it makes you more comfortable for us to use excessive, you know, and then, for instance, you know, you know, most of a period of 15 minutes or something like that, we can certainly do that, but it really won't change the discretion the officer would exercise, whether it said continuous 15 minutes or not. They would be making that judgment call each time they were out there.
And I agree with that, I just want to make sure you have the teeth you need to deal with those circumstances when they legitimately show up. And I understand you don't now, I'm, so I'm in full support of this, but at the same time, I don't want it to be abused. That, that's my only concern, and a good job on the at-large and little stray, because I know that legal definition gets often skewed.
Tom?
Good presentation, I appreciate the work you've done back with 2017. This one falls way short of that, this was put on the, on the library bulletin boarding and on the website on Thursday of last week. We need more community involvement, there are people in this town that have got loads and loads of experience with dogs and need to review this document. They may come back and say, hey, it's great, go for it. But there may be certain tweaks that need to happen, and I would like to see community involvement, maybe some of the, I'll call them higher-level dog people, meet with you, Chief, you, Merrily, and possibly the attorney and a couple of council members, call it whatever it needs to be, a study session or whatever, and try to remain more transparent, get some input from the folks in town. There's a lot of, our pet community is huge.
Bob?
I think that you should take the time limit out. If an officer is called more times to a house for a nuisance dog, he can take reports from neighbors and everybody else.
That's what we're currently doing, and it's just, I don't know, there's no real definition to it, and, you know, they are using their discretion now, but we've just had a problem, you know, trying to get those prosecuted and stuff, because we don't, and the other jurisdictions, you know, they have this, and it seems to work better for them, having at least the rule of thumb kind of in writing. Is it still a lot of discretion involved?
Okay.
We get a lot of phone calls from the public that are dealing with barking dogs next door to them. And they are always telling us, we look up the ordinance and there's nothing there, there's nothing there. What do we do? And there isn't, there's really not much there, it's very vague.
I read the ordinance, you're right. But trying to put a time limit, like when I call an officer and say, barking 17 minutes?
Well, we do a lot of things to, like I said, we try to educate first, if it continues to be a problem, we ask the, the person that's complaining, and we also try to get other witnesses from other residents, and we ask them to try to document these things, start time, end time and stuff. Because we, there again, I don't have the staff to go sit out there with a stopwatch, you know, and time it, so we, we do, we do try to get collaborating witnesses and things like that for the ones we do prosecute. But this would just give us a little more of a guideline, and also when the public looks the ordinance up, they know, okay, the dog's barking five minutes, it's probably not gonna qualify, or the dog's barking longer. And 12 minutes is a long time when you're trying to sleep and the neighbor's dog is barking, so.
Annie?
Thank you for your work on this, I appreciate the six-feet leash. I have, okay. So speaking for me personally, I have an invisible fence, so if you walk by my house, you would think all my dogs were at large, which they're not. However, they are very scary if you're walking by my house, because that's their job. So I'm concerned with, where is it? The possible fear, where was that at? Where'd it go?
What page are you on now, Amy?
Causes injury, a reasonable fear of attack or bodily, and so the reasonable fear, can we define that a little bit, could you define that for me?
In our current thing, and it's, it's kind of just the same as like an assault, if, if you call us because you feel like you were assaulted, you know, you have to be in reasonable fear. So if the person that's, you're claiming is trying to assault you, is 97 years old in a wheelchair and on oxygen, and doesn't have the capability to hurt you, then, you know, in your mind, maybe it is, but we have to kind of use that discretion, so. There again, we're not, you know, a lot of people have dogs and have fences, and the dogs run to the fences and they bark, or they have invisible fences. And we're not looking to do anything with those, it's, it's where they actually have, they have to have some capability of causing that injury. So if that part of it existed, and you were in fear, and the dog could have hurt you, it's kind of like the park where, you know, they've had people where the dog lunges and gets within three inches of them, and they truly were in fear of getting bitten, because that dog wasn't under, truly under control, that would be an instance of that.
Okay, so from my view, my dogs would be scary. If I, if I would be walking by my house and not know, I would, I would have reasonable fear. So does this open it up?
This currently is the one we have now, we're not changing any of that.
It's, oh, it's redlined.
I think they just moved, moved something there, that, that was currently in there. And there again, it's kind of officer discretion, we, we realize, you know, when we go out, we look at the scene, we look at things, and, you know, we understand invisible fences, we deal with that a lot, so. There again, we, we try to be an educator, we try to talk to the owner, we try to talk to the person that's calling us, and they're getting, if they're, they might not have known you had an invisible fence, so after we go talk to you, we'll realize, okay, there's an invisible fence, and it's keeping your dog restrained. Usually, it's just a matter of clearing that up and talking to everybody, and, so we're, we try to be peacekeepers more than anything else.
Your animal control officers do an excellent job, okay, I kneel.
Is it animal control you send off, or is it a police officer?
Well, we only have two animal control officers, so they're the first that normally would respond, but they don't work because they're, for safety, I don't have them really work after dark. They're not generally armed and going on people's property, so if it's after hours, generally it'll be a police officer that goes out. And what they will do is document and then leave it for the animal control officer to follow up on. And they'll also, like, if there's a dog at large, they'll, they'll take it to the shelter, and then the next day, an animal control officer or an adoption specialist will deal with it. So it's a combination of our animal control officers and police officers.
And out of those 80 calls, how many are 911?
Sadly, a few.
I know, it's more expensive, a lot more expensive. All right, any more comments on this? The discussion, I mean, the decision now, should we need a motion to either table this or to vote on it?
Yeah, we get a public hearing?
Yep, I guess so, if you guys.
If you do decide to open a public hearing, we do have a couple submitted comment cards.
Okay. You guys good with that? Are we here good?
Definitely.
All right. Then we'll, do I have to open the public hearing?
Okay. First, we have Donna Armstrong.
Yeah, to me too.
Happy anniversary, by the way.
Happy anniversary.
Can't see you.
Really?
Thank y'all.
Forty-six years. Forty-six years.
And.
Forty-seven.
Seven.
Mayor and council?
The mic over by you, please?
Same thing.
There you go.
Negative. Um, I am a professional dog person in this town. I have been on last two groups that have rewritten these dog laws. And I am quite upset that we haven't even, the dog community doesn't know anything about these changes. And I think that's very unfair to us. We support the town. We work with the town. I would like to see a thirty day table so that we can look at these and read them. I'm not saying it's bad. I'm saying we haven't seen them. And we have a huge professional dog system here. And these breeders have come here because everyone has worked well with them about their dogs. And now we're going to slam them in the face because we're not going to take them into consideration. And I think that is very poor on the town's part. So I first, I would like to see a table. I would love to have a meeting or a study session so we can sit down and talk about it and then re-present it to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next we have Debbie Pomeroy.
There she comes.
Mayor and council, thank you for hearing us tonight. I have been living in Chino Valley since nineteen ninety-two. I have been an AKC legislative liaison since two thousand seven. I have my fingerprints all over all the dog ordinances since then. And I too am shocked that this is happening and you all were going to do it as a consent item without a community that has been founded on loving animals, owning animals. There is no dog limit here. So like this, this line here, um, no more than five occasions within a given ten day period. You mean my dogs can only play every day, every other day? Cause when they play, they bark at each other and they run around and have a good time. And then they lay down and sleep most of the day. They never are at night. I understand the nightlife. Okay, but that line just kind of crazy. Um, I can put them on account maybe. I don't know. But I too would like to see a study session and have a bunch of educated people on animal behavior to sit down and discuss this wording. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the speaker cards I have for that one.
Okay.
So what's the pleasure of the show?
Mayor Miller, would you like to close that public hearing?
I didn't open it because they said I didn't have to.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
All right. We, I guess we have three options. One is to, uh, approve it as written. Number two is to die it as written. Number three is to table it for a study session. The three, I see. So what's the pleasure?
Well, I would, I firmly agree that if, when, if we're in the future, Ms. Blackmore, any agenda item that deals with change of code that could potentially impact a large number of our citizens, we should have it as a study session first before it goes before the council, because this is the first time I've seen it. Did we have a study session on it that I missed?
No, no.
So I mean, I think that would be the best way to pursue any code change anywhere in, in the town in the future. But for the benefit of the numerous animals, people we have here, including myself and my wife, I think it wouldn't hurt us because I do support this. I don't think it would hurt us to table it, do a study session, allow more community input because we may learn a tweak that would benefit us and the police and the animal control. We may learn something from it.
You guys being safe? Nope. Do you table?
I, I have no problem making a motion. If that's acceptable, I'll do that. I would make a motion to table this item until the first meeting in February to a study session between the dog involvement people in the community and the town council and to include the police department.
I thought we were discussing.
He made a motion.
I seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any more discussion?
Can we repeat? Can you repeat the motion, please? I thought we were in the middle of discussing that.
We table it until the first meeting of February to give more community involvement and then bring in people to talk to us and to the police department at the, the next meeting for a study session.
Oh, like a public safety subcommittee meeting?
Kinda. We put public safety back in the.
So you have a motion to second?
I do. I just was asking for any more discussion. Is there any more discussion?
Well, I think what's presented here is for the people that, um, have issues with their dogs barking, not the people that have, um, that are the dog trainers and stuff that we're talking about at the park. So, um, I think we can vote.
Thank you. Any more discussion on this side? So a motion's made and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
No.
May. Okay. So this need, this will be tabled until, uh,
Fourteenth February.
Fourteenth February. Thank you. Okay, moving on, action items. Consideration and possible action to accept the comprehensive annual financial report and the annual expenditure limitation report for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two as prepared by Henry Horn LLP certified public accountants.
Good evening there.
How are you, Mr. Mayor, members of council? Uh, happy new year. My name is Brian Hemmerly. I am the lead audit partner with what was Henry and Horn. We have now merged with a firm named Baker Tilly. Uh, it's the tenth largest firm in the United States. I do have some slides here and hopefully before yourselves, uh, to go over this year's audit. This year you received a clean opinion on your financial statements. Uh, there were no uh, modifications to the auditor's report that are needed to be reported to council or members of the public. We provide reasonable assurance that your financial statements are materially correct, that there are no material modifications needed. We reviewed your internal controls. We walked through those. We test those controls. We do statistically valid sampling on your transactions throughout the year, June thirty, twenty twenty-two. There were no major changes to your financial reporting standards, other than the new lease standard. There is a new lease standard that came out for government audit or government entities such as cities and towns. Um, the effects of that lease standard have been reported in your financial statements and there were no findings related to that. We had no difficulties encountered while performing the audit this year. No uncorrected misstatements, no disagreements with management. The second report we issued is what's called a single audit. That's towards the bottom of this slide. The single audit is what the federal government requires when you spend, the city spends or the town spends over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal grant money. Uh, this year you had ARPA money, the coronavirus state and local recovery fund money. And four point two million dollars of that was tested by the auditors this year. That report received a clean opinion and it has been uploaded to the federal government and it has been accepted by the federal government. There were no findings in that report. The annual expenditure limitation report is the third report we issue. This is required by the Auditor General Office of the State of Arizona. You are required to stay under a certain limitation of expenditures each year. This year, the S economics estimates commission limitation for the town of Chino Valley was forty-one point three million dollars. The town only expended twenty-six point four million related to that limitation. So you're well below the limitation requirements set by the state of Arizona. Again, there are no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, no findings that we need to report to you, no recommendations. Some high level graphs here for you to see. Assets are up this year in this graph. The two bars are twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. This is government wide assets, liabilities, equity, revenue and expenses. The assets are up this year mostly due to the ARPA monies that came in that are being used for general government expenses. Um, as well as the capital for the police station proceeds from the debt related to that police station. Businesswide activities, this will be your enterprise funds at the cit, at the town. Uh, really no changes here. Nothing alarming to point out. It's pretty flat for the year, especially on the P and L side, the revenues and expenses. This slide is just a look at your overall spending by functional expense, government, general government, public safety, public works, culture, rec, health and welfare, and how much of that is supported by uh, revenues that are not tax based. So this is really charges for services and, uh, grant related items. You could see public safety. Um, clearly it isn't supported by those things. It's supported more by tax based revenue stream, sales taxes. And that is my brief presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Like that one.
Any questions over here? Bob, Annie, any question?
No, I'm very happy.
Over here? Tom?
We'll get the GFOA certificate?
Oh, no doubt at all. No. Yeah, you, this town has received it every year that I'm aware of and, um, everything seems to be reported as it should be.
Did you have me?
Thanks, Joe.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me. Happy new year.
Happy new year. Thank you.
Oh, wait. Oh yeah, we gotta do recommended action. You undo that?
Make a motion. We accept action item six A. Accept the comprehensive annual audit of financial report and the annual expenditure limitation report for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two as prepared by Henry and Horn LLP certified public accountant.
All second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six B, consideration fossil action to approve a four point five percent average market adjustment for sworn officers pay. Laura Kay.
Yes, there's a lot of cops here today.
Hi, you guys can see me. Good evening, mayor and council. Um, sorry if my voice sounds a little off. I've been, um, I'm, I'm well, but I was sick. I had bronchitis for a couple of weeks. Um, so the chief and I, uh, the chief and I are here to, uh, discuss the police department and present a recommendation for a market adjustment. Um, as you know, we've had some challenges in recruiting staff in recent years. Uh, we talked about workforce housing a couple, maybe a couple of meetings back. Um, and we have recruiting challenges and it's happened in recent years, um, and also in retain, retaining staff. And the three primary reasons for that is because of pay, labor force and housing. We're here before you today to discuss pay challenges and to request a market adjustment for sworn officers in the amount of sixty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for the balance of this fiscal year in order to remain salary competitive and match the regional market. So based upon projections, um, that were conducted by our finance director, uh, Joe Duffy, the police department will be able to handle this mid-year adjustment with their current and existing budget. Um, I wanted to go over, um, I wanted to give you an overview of what starting salaries look like for police officers in our region. So currently our starting salary is fifty-five thousand, three hundred dollars. And that includes lateral officers, officers who are post-certified. PV Prescott Valley, their current starting salary is fifty-five thousand, one twenty, but they're currently going through a compensation and classification study. So we anticipate that their future salary adjustment will match the market. Um, we have reached out to them and, um, they haven't really, they've been pretty quiet about their comp and class and it's, it's forthcoming. Um, Yavapai County Sheriff's Office, their starting salary is fifty-seven, nine ninety for deputy sheriffs, but they also provide a hiring bonus anywhere between five thousand and ten thousand dollars. The city of Prescott, um, their starting salary is fifty-eight thousand, fifty-five dollars. That was just approved by city council in either October or November of twenty twenty-two. And with that increase, they also approved that their cost of living adjustment be tied to the CPI come July of twenty twenty-three. So what we're recommending is that we match the regional market um, and have our starting wage for police officers, including lateral sworn officers, be at fifty-eight thousand, sixty-five dollars. And that number is based on the public sector personnel consultants, uh, compensation and classification study that they just completed for the town of Chino Valley. Um, so some reasons that I wanted to mention, um, as to why we're before you is because we want to provide for a safe, continue, I should say, to provide for a safe and secure community for all those who live and visit Chino Valley. This market adjustment will help with recruitment and retention of lateral officers. It'll save on turnover. It will create a balanced staff with varied knowledge, skills and abilities instead of being heavy with cadets. We want a balance of laterals and cadets. It'll also help minimize burnout and improve morale. And as everybody knows, we had law enforcement appreciation day yesterday. And we support the brave men and women who put their lives on the line to protect and serve, serve the, that should say the, citizens of this community and the public each and every day. So thank you very much for what you do for us. Uh, Chief Wynn, Detective Silva, uh, Lieutenant Chapman, Lieutenant McIntyre and the rest of the team. Um, yeah. For us. Thank you so much. Um, we have presented this slide to you in the past as well, when we presented, um, another topic of workforce housing. So you're probably familiar with some of these numbers. Average turnover rate, um, for government in twenty twenty-one was eighteen percent. Town of Chino Valley Police Department turnover since December of twenty twenty-one was nine point three three. We are below the average, but that still is high. And for every event that we have a turnover, a lateral officer leaves us, that means time and money. Um, so typically for a lateral officer to recruit, we, we lose a lot, an officer and we recruited an officer, there's a four month lag. For cadets who are not trained and we have, have to send them to NARDA to get post-certified. And then they have to go to field training, uh, have field training in the field with an existing officer. That's eighteen months we're looking at. Um, typically, uh, turnover costs for a lateral officer is thirty thousand dollars. Where it can be as high as a hundred thousand dollars for a cadet. So if we can recruit and retain lateral officers by matching the market wages, that's a big, a big deal for us. Um, we actually have, uh, one of our police officers, longtime police officer, has been with us for four and a half years. He has expressed an interest to potentially leave us and his reason cited was pay. So, um, and that's the typical reason that we get cited. Um, so in conclusion, the challenge we're looking to address today is to offer competitive pay that matches, solely matches the current market to recruit and retain lateral sworn police officers. So we can continue to provide for a safe and secure community for all of those that live and visit in Chino Valley. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Laura, I have one question. On that one slide, you said the way back is like the second or third one. What's a CPI?
Um, consumer price index.
Thank you.
I was like, what is it?
I think currently, Mayor, I think when they had their study session with Prescott, it's currently in the eight to nine percent. So they gave them a five percent like upfront mid-year adjustment and then whatever the CPI is when they do their, their coming budget, they will do the difference in July.
Okay. You ready for questions? How about over here, share a question, John?
Tom?
Nope.
Bob?
The starting pay, you want fifty-eight thousand. And then, um, was the, this raised scale?
We have a, uh, HR has a range and I'm not sure what the top out is. Um, so the, the minimum would be the fifty-eight oh, five, five, or whatever we have here, oh, six, five. Uh, and then it goes up and there's a cap. And so if we have a lateral come in, what we look at is total years of experience, Arizona experience, things like that. And then we try to place that person within that scale based on their experience. So it helps us to attract, you know, a balance of experienced officers and then brand new officers, because obviously if I get too many new ones, that can create problems. And not having enough, enough new ones coming into the system to help, you know, close those gaps as people age out, retire like I'm doing, um, you know, we try to keep that balance in there.
What is the scale?
Um, it is, it, it's typically, um, if I'm not mistaken, it's a twenty-six percent range, starting out currently at fifty-five, three hundred. And then there's to midpoint, it's thirteen and. Starting out currently at fifty five, three hundred and then there's to midpoint, it's thirteen and a half percent. And then from midpoint to the uh, maximum point of that range, it's another thirteen and a half percent.
You want to start out at fifty eight thousand though?
Fifty eight.
So that's where it starts from, not the fifty five.
Okay. Yeah.
Yes. Okay. Annie?
I'm good.
Eric?
Fantastic.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
So we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve action item six B, consideration and possible action to approve four point five percent average market adjustment for sworn officer pay.
All second. Mo- motion made and seconded. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six C. Public hearing and consideration and possible action to approve ordinance number two zero two, three, nine, two, eight, to rezone approximately one acre of property located at three, six, nine, nine, north, stat, route, state route eighty nine, Arizona parcel number three, oh, six, oh, four, oh, one, eight, A. From commercial light to commercial heavy. Will?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission or council, excuse me. Um, Will Denji, Senior Planner here with the town of Chino Valley. As read, this is a requested rezone from a commercial light zoning district to the commercial heavy zoning district. Um, for the T D H Investments Hendrickson Property, there is an app or a agent representative here this evening for the property owner. The property itself is located roughly halfway in between road five north and road four north. It is north of the Chino Valley Animal Hospital and south of C N R Trucking located on Durham. The property size is a little over one acre at one point oh, four acres. Currently, the property is being used as three Cs automotive. However, that is currently an unpermitted land use within the commercial light zoning district. It is permitted within the commercial heavy zoning district though. So that's where this request is stemming from. So the subject property currently is owned commercial light to the north and south. You have directly commercial heavy. To the east, you have multifamily mobile home park zoning. And then to the west across the highway, you do have uh, commercial light along with some more uh, commercial heavy zoning. This item was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission on December thirteenth of last year. There was no public comment and the commission forwarded a recommendation of approval with a seven to O vote. With that, your recommendation from staff and from the commission is to hold a public hearing and to approve ordinance twenty twenty three, nine, two, eight. Go ahead and open up for questions or discussion.
Okay, any questions for Will from the council?
This is just to bring them into.
Correct. Yes.
They're unpermitted because
it is not allowable within commercial light. Correct. So they submitted a business license application with us. We had to deny that and then.
Over here, questions? All right. Um, questions, the applicant here that wants, you guys have any questions for the applicant?
No.
Over here?
No.
So we don't need to do that. So we're going to open a public hearing now and the town clerk will call on public for comments.
I have no speaker cards.
No speaker cards.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot my ABCs. And we have Barbara Harper. Okay, she doesn't need to comment.
No comment. Okay. So we'll close the public hearing and we'll take the motion.
Make a motion to approve action item six C. To approve ordinance number two, zero, two, dash, nine, two, eight.
Second. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
All right.
All right. Any opposed? Motion carries. Items six D. Uh, public hearing consideration possible action to approve ordinance number two, zero, two, three, nine, two, nine, to rezone approximately five point eight, three acres. A property located at five seventy five West Road, one North Arizona parcel number three, oh, six, two, three, zero, seven, eight, F. From agricultural residential, five acre minimum to single family residential, one acre minimum. Will again.
Hello again. Will Denji, Senior Planner here with the town of Chino Valley. As read, this is a requested rezone for um, AR five agricultural residential, five acre minimum to the SR one single family residential, one acre minimum zoning district. The applicant, Mr. Simpson and property owner is in attendance this evening. The subject property is just shy of six acres at five point eight, three acres. Uh, it is currently used as residential for about two and a half, and then the remainder is undeveloped land. The property sits along or south of West Road, one north, west of the highway. You have it directly south of, south of the Word of Life Assembly Church and the Chino Grove subdivision. Currently, the property is owned AR five, uh, parcels to the north, east and west do have that same zoning district. However, there is uh, SR one directly to the south of this parcel as well to the northwest with the Chino Grove subdivision. This item was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission on December thirteenth of last year. There was no public comment and the commission forwarded a recommendation of approval with a six to one vote. The planning and zoning commission's recommendation for this is to hold a public hearing and then to adopt and approve ordinance number twenty twenty three, two, nine, two, nine. Open it up for questions and discussion.
Any questions over here for Will on this?
Uh, what was the Navo on planning and zoning? Did they state the reason?
Yeah, um, the Nave vote was from Commissioner Switzer and he decided he felt that this was um, out of place for this area. He felt like it was spot zoning.
Thought it was what?
Uh, spot zoning. So a zoning with uh, that didn't, didn't fit. But that was his opinion of the no vote.
Is this going to be hooked up to water and sewage or?
Uh, this will not, no.
There's no water.
There's no, nothing in this area.
Done there. There's nothing there. Okay.
How about over here?
John?
Is there a conceptual design of what the layouts of the one acre would look like?
Uh, that's from my understanding. So that'll come if the, obviously if the entitlements are uh, approved tonight. However, yeah, it is the applicant's intention and we can call him up here if you wish to get a little bit further clarity on this, is to essentially cut the property right down the middle here. He would retain his house in the outbuildings. And then the remainder roughly three acres would be sold off.
So you know, we're doing away with flag lots, correct?
No, they're still there.
But I thought we we were trying to refrain from flag lots because what is three acre? How would you, how do you conceptualize the acres? Are they going to go north, south, east, west? Because if they go east, west, you're going to have to do a flag lot. I thought it was the town's intent to deviate and try not to allow any more flag lots. I I might be wrong about that, but that was my understanding is we're trying to.
Yeah, we can touch on that. Um. So he he would have three acres remaining. Um, and and so flag lot wouldn't be the only option for him to develop this. He could do that minor subdivision through the um, easement or the private road through there to get that frontage requirements met. Uh, if the applicant does choose to do a flag lot consideration, uh, the town code does currently permit it. And I I don't believe at this point in time, at least his staff's opinion to remove the flag lot provision. There is um, a lot of cases do it or a street layout that the flag lot provisions help um, substantially to where lots could not be divided if there wasn't that provision with the exception of creating subdivisions. A- again, uh, from my understanding with the applicant's intention is to just sell it off the three acres as a whole. And then whoever purchases that would be coming through the town land division process, the minor land division process. And then we would make sure they would adhere to all of the U D O standards.
And the last, okay, so he he'll do the, he's, he doesn't plan to develop the land himself. He's just going to sell it off, which is, I understand that. So and it's, and it's consistent with the general plan today, the conformance of that and all that. So the only que- I am, okay, no, I'm good.
Tom?
See, he has no intention of putting five one acre lots in this spot.
Can't.
At this point, no.
Okay.
Hey, Will, can you please answer for me what the SR regulations, SR one, and what's the next?
SR one point six, which is one, one point six acre, SR two, SR two point five.
But there is no SR three.
Correct.
So if you have three acres, you have to go to SR one.
You do not.
That's what I thought. Okay, is that it for Will? Okay. Um, any questions for the applicant up here? Over here? Tom, you're kind of.
No, I don't see what's over here from the public hearing.
Okay. And I'm going to open the public hearing. And the town clerk can call for public for comments.
I have one for this item, uh, Rachel Farnow.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I think I recall when I was present for P and Z with this issue that the applicant actually said he intended to build two homes on that space. Um, I do think when we look at the map with all the AR five in there, that it is a little bit of a spot zoning to go down to SR one. Um, I understand that with the current use of the land right now, there isn't really a potential unless he decides to demolish the houses there to going into five one acre lots. However, with the general plan rewrite coming up and I don't know as far as the comprehensive uh, zoning plan, if there's anything smaller than SR one allowed there, but I just hesitate to see a rezone like this happen. If now it's being said his intention is to sell those three acres off and someone else can come in, what stops that person from coming in and having a rezone down to twelve hundred, which is our minimum, which definitely would be non-conforming in that area considering that there's nothing of that size. So I just think approving something like this with Will stating that now his intention is to sell the property to someone else. Are we setting ourselves up for a snowball rezoning effect?
Is that it?
Yes, that's all.
Okay, we're going to close the public hearing then. Or were we? D? I lost my place. I'm sorry. Any further comments on this?
I'd like to ask staff one more question.
Okay. We did the parcel restart a couple, about a year and a half ago, right?
October of twenty twenty.
Right. So would this subject property after, let's say, approval came through there? Would there be, would he still have one more split he could do on those three, one acre lots?
That is correct. He would be limited to three just through the minor land division and then everything would be forced through the minor subdivision or subdivision process.
But he could, but if he sold the one acre lot to me, I couldn't subsequently split that into three or four twelve thousand acre parcels, could I?
That is correct. You could not do that. So it's tied based on parent parcel, not by ownership.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Will.
Yeah.
Okay, we're down to the motion.
Make a motion. We approve ordinance two, zero, two, three, dash, nine, two, nine.
Motion made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item E, public hearing consideration, possible action to prove ordinance number two, zero, two, three, nine, three, zero, to rezone the northernmost approximately twenty five hundred square foot portion of approximately one, that's a lot of approximately. Uh, one point five acres of property, APN three, oh, six, two, nine, zero, four, one, E. Which portion is located directly south of seven twenty two West Road, two south. APN three, oh, six, two, nine, zero, four, one, D, from single family residential, one acre min- minimum to agricultural residential, five acre minimum. So we're going one way. That last one was down. This one's going up.
So this one's a little different. Uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Will Denji, Senior Planner here with the town of Chino. Um, so a- as read, this, this is not your typical rezoning. This is a rezoning of a portion of property uh, to the tune of twenty five hundred square feet in order to essentially divide that portion out and incorporate it into the northernmost parcel. Both of these parcels are owned by the applicant and he is in attendance this evening. So the subject property uh, that is a portion of it being rezoned is one point five, nine acres in size. It is located directly south of seven, two, two, West Road, two, south, which is this parcel up here. It is north of West Road, two, south and west of Maverick and Arturo's Restaurant. Currently, the subject property is vacant with the exception of an unpermitted barn in the northwest corner. Currently, the subject property is owned, single family residential, one acre minimum. The surrounding zoning um, on all sides with the exception of the south is AR five. That parcel that it is intending to be incorporated into if approved uh, for the rezoning tonight is already, or is owned agriculture residential, five acre minimum as well. So to give a little bit more clarity on this here, um, the two thousand, five hundred square foot, it's um, section of parcel B as identified on this map here is the portion that we are talking and discussing about rezoning tonight. Uh, the barn is indicated on this survey as well. It has appropriate setbacks for the AR five zoning district, so there would be no creation of a non-conformity. Uh, the parcel itself, um, the two thousand, five hundred square feet. And in conjunction with this ordinance is going to be tied to the rezoning taking effect with the lot combination. So again, there's going to be no non-conformity created there. So it's all going to happen concurrently. Um, the applicant is also going to be required per this ordinance to obtain a building permit for this barn. Otherwise, this would not have been feasible and he is currently in the process of doing so. This case was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission on December thirteenth, twenty twenty two. There was no public comment and the commission forwarded a recommendation of approval with a seven to O vote. The commission's recommendation is to hold a public hearing and then to approve ordinance twenty twenty three, nine, three, zero. And I'll go ahead and open it up for questions or discussion. I'll go ahead and throw map here and if we can.
We zoom in on that by, is it possible?
I can try.
Well, there you go.
About as good as it's going to get.
Oh, okay. So existing awning proposed. What's the backstory? Did he buy this land and it was already there?
Unfortunately, he did create it. Um, so he bought this land and he is in attendance. So if you, you want to work through, um, you can. Uh, he he did construct this barn and now he wants to sell off this acre that the barns or acre and a half that the barn sits on. Um, but he wants to keep the barn.
Oh.
Lot of pieces.
Oh, okay. That makes sense.
Any questions on this side for Will besides John?
He wants to sell off the acre with the barn on it?
No. So he wants to sell it off without the barn. So that's why we're on, the request is only for the twenty five hundred square feet. That twenty five hundred square feet will then get incorporated to the adjacent parcel to the north, which he also owns.
Okay, then what does he want that other acre to be zoned at?
It it'll still retain the existing zoning as of SR one, so it'll be a one acre minimum lot to be built.
Okay, and then um, would that be water and sewage hook up on that also?
Un- unfortunately here, there is no town water or town sewer. The closest would be city of Prescott water. And I do not believe this property is a C V I D, uh, it's Chino Valley Irrigation District, so where they're obligated to serve it.
So he only wants to sell off one acre so he can have septic and well.
Correct.
Anything over in this side?
Is the barn going away?
No, it'll still, he's going to get it permitted.
Is it a nice barn?
You can ask that to the applicant.
Any other questions for Will?
Well, it's better than P and Z because P and Z had it as twenty five square feet.
That was a honest mistake.
It looks, I mean, it it sounds confusing, but it looks like they're just taking that corner and adding it to the other property. That's all we're doing.
All he's doing.
All right. Is there any questions for the applicant? Should we have him come up? Yes, you said, Eric?
Oh, no, I'm good.
No, thanks.
Applicant question.
Pretty easy.
Applicant question.
All right, then we're going to open a public hearing and ask the town clerk to call the public for comments.
After checking and double checking my ABCs, no, I don't have a comment card for this.
No comments, so we'll close the public hearing. And we need a motion. Unless there's further discussion needed.
No.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve ordinance number two, zero, two, three, dash, nine, three, zero.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item F. Public hearing consideration and possible action to approve ordinance number two, zero, two, three, nine, two, seven, to rezone approximately ten acres of property generally located in the northeast corner of East Road, two, north and Pepper Tree Place, APN three, oh, six, one, eight, zero, one, seven, C. And three, oh, six, one, eight, zero, one, seven, D. From agricultural residential, five acre minimum to single family residential, twelve hundred square foot minimum. Hi, Will, again.
Once again, hello. Well, Denji, Senior Planner here with the town of Chino Valley. As read, this is a requested rezone from the AR five zoning district to our relatively new SF twelve thousand single family residential, twelve thousand square foot minimum lot size zoning district. Uh, this is our first rezone for this zoning district or first applicant to try to get a uh, rezone for this zoning district. Uh, this is the first leg of the development process for a subdivision. Um, the Uh, this is the first leg of the development process for a subdivision, um, the process is rezoning. Preliminary plat, technical review, and then final plat subsequently. Uh, at this point, we're just discussing entitlements and we'll go ahead and get right on into it. So the subject properties, there are two, each are five acres in size totaling ten acres, um, the existing land use is vacant. It is located at the northwest corner of west road two north and Pepper Tree Place, uh, it is sandwiched in between Chino Meadows subdivision, the original one. And then Chino Meadows unit two, and that is west or sorry, excuse me, east of the city of Prescott well facility and Bonnie Plant Farms. So as previously stated, the subject properties current zoning is AR five, um, to the north and to the south, you do have those Chino Meadow subdivisions that hold the. SR zero point one six zoning district that has since been retired from the town. That zoning district has a minimum lot size of roughly seven thousand square feet. And the proposed zoning district for these two subject properties is the SF twelve thousand, so twelve thousand square foot lot size minimum. So roughly just a little shy of double the lot size that you would see in the meadows. While this is not a plat, um, item tonight, it, uh, it staffed feel that it is relevant to share the intention of the applicant tonight. With his conceptual design, it is for twenty four lots, uh, smallest lot size being that twelve thousand. Uh, singular access point off of road two north, roads would be paved up to town code standards, sidewalk one side curb gutter. Utilities will be town of Chino Valley Water and Town of Chino Valley Sewer. The applicant will be responsible for that extension along and at this point in time, it is believed to be the, the extension is believed to occur along. West road, excuse me, east road two north. Um, there are currently two parcels reserved for open space that'll assist with, uh, green belts for the community as well as drainage. The item was presented to the planning and zoning commission on December thirteenth of last year. Four members of the public spoke with questions and concerns over utilities, existing road conditions, existing traffic and new traffic. The type of housing and the commission forwarded a recommendation of approval with a seven to O vote. The commission's recommendation is to hold a, a public hearing and then to approve ordinance twenty twenty three nine two seven. I'll go ahead and open up to questions or discussion.
Questions on this side this time.
The applicant here?
He is.
Yes.
Okay. So he'll present and.
He's next, this is questions for Will.
So we're going from ten acres down to twenty four, twelve hundred foot?
Twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand. Okay, pardon me. Okay, yeah.
How about over here?
I read something about the, um. Road two north. That there was, uh, work needed to be done. But it wasn't gonna be done right now because the town wasn't ready. And money was gonna be set aside in the trust.
Sure, I can, um, I believe Frank Marbury is still. Yes, he is, um, we can call him up here and have him answer that if you wanna get planning questions out and then we can switch over to public works.
Yes.
Okay.
Any questions for Will?
How's the neighbor to the east feel?
To the east, um. There is an intention to further develop that similarly, uh, just has not come before the commission, so.
That's all I needed.
Yeah.
No, no entrance from Chino Meadows, just from road two?
Correct. Yep, just on two.
Just one entrance to the twenty four.
Correct.
And this is all just conception.
At this point, yeah, we're just.
They hadn't been approved by fire or anybody.
Uh, they, they've commented and they, they have received a list of comments and, and the conceptual plan is adhering to their code at this point.
Okay, they're okay with one entrance there. Okay, are you, any other thing else for Will? Frank, can you come up, please? Thank you, Will. Thank you, Bob had a question.
Thank you, question was, um, there was, the town has to do some work on road two. But you're not ready to do it. And the developer said that he would. Put money somewhere. So when it's ready. So. I don't know how long you expect to take. For that. Construction work to be done on the road. What, how much have you decided that he needs to put in trust? So down the road, when the town does the work. We don't have to pay any extra.
Right, what you're talking about is, is what I call cash in lieu of improvements. And what we're, why we're recommending that is because, uh, when the development such as a subdivision like this comes along. The town generally asks for the improvements. On the adjacent road to be widened to the ultimate section like two north. Um, I believe it's a three lane road going in with a ten foot sidewalk on the north side. So the trick is. We haven't designed the road to accommodate the curb and gutter and sidewalks. And roads, so if he just put in this small section in front of his subdivision. It would likely be in the wrong spot and we would have to tear out all that curb and gutter. And sidewalk and redo it if it's off of even an inch or two, um, so. Until that road gets a, a good plan and profile design. What engineering is recommending is to hold that amount of money, what, how that'll be determined is their engineer will come up with a cost estimate, we'll review it. Present it to council. For acceptance of that cash in lieu of improvements. And that'll be held by finance in a, in a special account and by law, it can't be used for anything but that roadway. Um, the time is undetermined at this time, it depends on council budgeting and, and funding allotments. Um, you do. Wind up losing the inflation cost, so if it's say five years from now, um. If the road's more expensive, you don't go back and ask the developer to pay. That higher rate, that's the downside to it, the upside to it is you don't. Like I said, wind up losing if you have to go tear that out, um, if the. Plan and profile or design changes from, from now to then, they can kind of guess, but. And in the line of work with engineering and roads, it's, it's very hard to get that. Correct until you're ready to build the, the whole section, I would say from. At least, uh, road one east to James would need to be designed altogether. If that helps.
It, it helps that I understand that, but I wanna know where the amount comes from. Because the developer comes in and makes money. So. If we only get X amount of money from him. And then when it comes to when we're ready to do something. It's a lot more. And it's costing us money for the developer to come in and develop property.
Right, you're talking the inflation costs?
Yeah.
That's the downside that. Sorry?
The town shouldn't be on the, shouldn't have to pay. More. You should be able to figure out what the inflation's gonna be in three or four years or whatever.
Maybe, I hate to throw Andrew under the bus, but is that a legal question about charging future interest?
Um, mayor, members of the council, the, um. The standard you're held to is what's a reasonable development exactly at the time of the approval, um. It would be difficult. For anyone to have guessed what happened in the last. Three to five years on construction costs, so we would have been wrong, um, probably by a lot anyway. Um, the, the alternative here is you build the current improvements at the current spot. And you have scalloped streets or potentially in the wrong location, um, and so, uh, it has always been. calculation on the date of the exaction, whatever it is, whether it's. Uh, streets, sidewalks, whatever the thing is, on the date of the approval, we've never projected out in the future because. Uh, that gets into guessing and would potentially have someone have a claim that, uh, the exaction is in excess of. The proportionate share that they should be paying.
Okay. Don't have to be happy with all the answers to.
Amy, did you have?
No, I didn't.
Frank, was there a, uh, traffic analysis or anything done? We're adding. Um, is that coming up?
There will be through the technical review process, I don't anticipate. Any major issues with twenty four lots as far as needing turn lanes or anything like that, but that'll. Also go into the, um, exactions that we're asking for, if, if that analysis proves that they need a diesel lane or. Uh, that might change the situation of asking for improvements now versus later as well. So that's typically done after the preliminary plat before the final plat.
There's probably an additional fifty cars on the road on that, on road two to turn into one.
Uh, twenty four lots, traffic wise, we count that as, uh, for single family homes approximately two hundred and forty trips per day. Usually ten trips per day per house. Between deliveries, garbage, the residents coming and going. It's just traffic numbers. And, uh, if, if I may at this time just add into on the north side, uh, I don't think they're looking for access, but we. Will, I think we're asking for a little right away, is that right? Uh, Merritt is the name of the street. Has. Twenty five feet of right away from the old Chino Meadows one subdivision, so we're asking for at least the right away there, even if they don't access it. To give that merit a normal fifty foot right away for a local road.
That be an emergency road or just?
It's an existing road.
But it, I mean, would it be an emergency road into the. Proposed development?
That would be up, the applicant could always change the layout and request an access off of that road. We're not denying that right now, but he's not intending to use that at this point.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Will. Okay, can the applicant please come up? Oh, it's John Roach.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, mayor, council, thanks for having me. Um, my name's John Rocha, I'm with Meadowview North LLC, so that's the applicant here on this case. Um, it's been a long time coming, we've been working at, on this for quite a bit. What I didn't wanna do is just present a quasi vague rezoning case and, you know, saying this is kind of what's to be and maybe the plat comes later and yada yada. So we did spend. A significant amount of time with engineers, which Frank, I love you, but you guys are difficult, um. And, and not on this plat, but just in general, um. To get this plat to where it is now, so there's some clarity and there's some definition around what the project's gonna be for, you know, for you folks to consider and also obviously for the. Citizens of the town of Chino. Um, but I mean, what could I say, I mean, I wanna think the staff, you know, they've been great and just helping me navigate through all this, um. And then as far as just what. The boxes that get checked here, you know, I'm proud of to present to the town, um, it conforms to the general plan, obviously, so based on what the town. Has voted on of what they wanna see, I think if you look at the location, which granted I've learned my lesson a little bit, I've been here, I was here probably about a year and a half ago and I. Presented a project that didn't make that much sense, I can agree to that, um. On the, on the west side of town, um, so I've, I've taken some time to really look into where the locations make sense. Based on the general plan, based on traffic circulation, and so I just think this is a great spot, um, for this project. Um, I think Will hit on this already, but. You know, it's the, the high, or sorry, the lowest density, uh, in this area as far as north and south, uh, my lots are almost. Double of what's existing there now. Um. A big plus is town water, town sewer that we'll be hooking up to on this project, uh, I think it's just, I mean, it's not as small about, it's about eighteen hundred linear feet. Of water main, that's that I intend to bring over from road one east to, uh, front the entire project here. And, um, I think, uh, council, uh, council member Perkins also brought this up, but. My understanding is that the neighbor to the east is also looking at potentially some sort of development in the future, which I know that town's been. Frustrated about, I guess, with. The developer community, building community about maybe circumventing, hooking on the city. Uh, utilities based on a three hundred foot linear feet distance, um, so in this case, that's not happening, that's, they're, we're gonna hook up to water and sewer here. Um, and one of the, the biggest things I wanna share again, the frontage, like, you know, that's been a discussion I've had with Frank. Uh, I know a lot of folks in P and Z, I know in the neighborhood meeting, folks expressed their. Frustrations with road conditions, I think that intersection road one east to north is. Not favorable, it's, it's, people have a hard time with it, so at least we're, you know. I initially thought we were gonna do the frontage street improvements for the project, but it makes sense after talking to Frank and everything he explained to, uh, council member. Sorry. Shaker, okay, um. But anyway, so that, that's just something they told me that is a option, it's a cash in lieu, just as he explained, which I'm, I'm totally okay with. Um, so I think that's gonna, you know, we're doing, I think, I'm doing my fair share, my portion of just bringing up the standards there on the road. Um, and the biggest thing. I wanna leave with here is just the affordable housing problem that we're seeing in the Quad City area. And more specifically here in Chino, that's my conviction, I mean, I own Southwest Homes or a factory-built. Uh, and modular housing retailer and developer. Um, we are about the saving grace as of right now of affordable housing, um, didn't think it was gonna get this bad. But, you know, just, just for enlightenment's sake, I did pull. Some data off of the Prescott Area Association of Realtors MLS data, and this is just something I wanted to share with. The council and the folks at Chino too, just cause it kind of, it, it stunned me a little bit. But as of right now, when you look at new homes in the area here in Chino that are listed for sale. Um, and that's new homes anywhere from being built two thousand twenty two, so out of last year to twenty twenty three. Uh, we're at a median price of eight hundred thousand dollars for new homes here in Chino. So that's everything from Antelope Bridge Estates, Appaloosa Metals, Heritage Point, so you're looking at lots there with, you know, one acre. One acre lots with a twenty five hundred square foot house listed at eight hundred thousand dollars. Um, you have point two one acres in Highlands Ranch that are around five fifty or so. Um, so doing quick math. Someone needing to afford eight hundred thousand dollars doesn't qualify for an FHA loan because it's over, it over exceeds the limits the federal government puts on FHA. So if someone comes in, they need forty thousand dollars for a down payment, that's five percent of the sales price. And that homeowner is assuming a fifty five hundred dollar a month mortgage. Um, at the most aggressive debt to income level, so if a loan, if a lender's going out giving you an FA, or sorry, a conventional loan at five percent down. If they put you at forty percent debt to income, that person or family or whoever it is. Needs to be earning about thirteen thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars a month. Which puts us at about a hundred and sixty five thousand dollars a year. So. Where the intent for this project is to have a quality factory-built ground set, stem wall foundations. A very similar product to a site built, only because they're in a factory, it reduces the cost of these homes by about two hundred thousand dollars on sales price. So we'd be looking more at like four to four twenty five thousand. Which for this area, again, for our young families, for our first time home buyers, for our working families in town, especially off of two north with. The commercial core pretty nearby. I think that's the main conviction of this project is to be able to offer that type of housing, um. Housing option for the folks here in Chino. So that's all I got for you, and I'd love to answer any questions.
John had a question for you.
Yeah, absolutely.
I like the project, I think it's perfectly located, everything's good, my only concern about this project and those in the future. Is what are you, are you gonna putting like HOA or CCNR, strong CCNRs in place to help preserve the community, cause when they're first built. And you go in there, the community looks good, but a year or two later, if there's no requirement to upkeep it, it becomes a problematic neighborhood. And what I'm trying to do, if I can, is influence the stigma of the manufactured home communities becoming. Frequent stops of our men in blue, you know what I mean? So what are you doing to help, I know you can't guarantee it, but what are you doing? And what measures are you going and willing to put in place to help preserve the neighborhood? And the aesthetics of the neighborhood, cause it will look nice when you first build it.
Yeah, no, and that's a, that's a fair question, so just as much as the town wants to preserve. The aesthetics and make sure that a community is vibrant and healthy and we don't have those problems. I'm in that same fight, cause I have to fight the stigma every day, right, so I have to convince people. That hey, these are two by six walls and a two by six stud is a two by six stud, it's not any more magical because. It's, you know, site built's doing it, uh, fifty. Uh, fifty, our fifty insulation is
Yeah, but are you gonna put, are you gonna generate strong CCNRs or an HOA or some other governing body? That all the future tenants are gonna be compelled to live by, which will help sustain that community in a, in a nice fashion.
Yeah, the the answer is yes, the intent is to absolutely put CCNRs in place. Um, in fact, I always share, I shared this at P and Z and the neighborhood meeting, but a good proof of concept, if you will, or a uh, a uh, you know, you don't see many of these, but if you look at Colonial Villas, that that project there on whatever that is, Juniper and Road One East or whatever, that gives you a sense of what, you know, there's there's a mixture of carports and garages and, but you got curb sidewalk gutter both side, you know, you have a sidewalk both sides, you have paved roads, you have street lighting, you have landscaping. That's about the feel that we wanna accomplish here. So when you're actually driving through it or walking through it, it seems like a I mean, for a lack of a better way to explain it, a site-built community, only that the homes came built.
I'm gonna remember that because the final plat's gonna come through.
Absolutely.
I'm just gonna tell you now, I support this now, but it needs to have uh, some type of provision that's gonna help enforce the community staying a clean and proper community.
Absolutely.
I'll remember that, I'm hoping all of you will help me remember that, so I'll probably get older and forget.
Any other questions for John or Mr. Rocha?
Yeah, you said the price was four twenty something?
Four to four twenty-five would be where the market is, would allow us to be at this point.
And you considered out affordable housing for this area?
Uh, it's the best affordable housing option that we can offer, based on, I mean, one thing that we haven't hit on at all and and um I know Mr. McGuire brought it up too, is that we couldn't predict how expensive things would get in the last three to four years of construction, labor, materials shortages. You know, so yeah, that's the best we can come up with. Obviously, the hope is that if the market can soften a little bit on these costs, then, I mean, I don't have anything to hide, you can see as I've started two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar houses uh, that I've sold in Chino lot home packages, so if the market allows for it, we would, that's the conviction that that I share is that I we wanna put affordable housing as much of it as possible to give our working families, young families a chance to live here.
As I've said to several meetings here, and uh, most of the people, as far as their wages, can only afford two hundred and sixty thousand dollars is what
Yeah.
So
Yeah.
You're, you're not building it for the people in Chino.
Yeah, we we've done some pretty robust re- research on the backend, and we, that is absolutely true when you look at one single earner for the household. But if you're looking at young families, two working adults, young kids or something like that, they can definitely be making, I mean, and I only know this cuz we have been selling those lot home packages at close to four hundred thousand. Three eight, three seventy-five to four right now. And it's nothing even remotely close, honestly, to location and the improvements of this community. But I hear your frustration with it, I hear it all the time too.
No, it's not. Hi.
Hi.
Um, are you selling them as land lot home together or just lots?
Uh, uh, the intent right now is to sell them as lot home.
Okay, and is it gonna be the same manufacturer?
Uh, we're looking at different ones right now. Yeah, they're different manufacturers, there's I think three to four manufacturer factories that operate out of Arizona. And so that's so far in it ahead right now, we're hoping that their pricing eases and gets better for the affordable option of it. But right now, we haven't set on any one particular one.
Okay, thank you.
I see John Garden asked a question back in I think it was during the uh, P and Z meeting about CCJ, sure, on the commission?
Yeah.
Tell us about that.
Yeah, the uh, the board president of Coalition for Compassion and Justice, it's a nonprofit for uh, uh, essentially homeless, homelessness, ending homelessness through housing, through a housing first model. Um, and that, that's fair to bring up and just in research, but that has zero to do with this project. This is not in any way, shape or form, any effort, collaboration, association with my position in CCJ, this is just as a sole applicant.
Thank you. I think this housing fits in the area of my major concern is one way in and out. And all that takes is a wreck on Road Two North and those people are trapped.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that just bothers me.
Yeah. I do too, I'm I'm surprised Firelet didn't do that, but who knows, we'll see how it goes. This is just conceptual for now, so thank you, John.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna open a public hearing and ask the town clerk to call on the public for comments.
I just have one from Rachel for now.
Again.
Again, who said that? Used to it by now, right? Um, so I hate this project so much. Um, the one thing I love about it is that it's gonna tie into city infrastructure, which is like yay, a bonus, but we had to, you know, do the UDO to twelve hundred square foot lots to be able to force uh, subdividers to do that, which I have a huge problem with because we have another developer who likes to do a lot of projects like this in our community. He had an item at P and Z last week. Therefore, they're gonna forward a recommendation of no to you, but what he has started doing with his applications is sticking to one acre lot, so he doesn't have to tie into city infrastructure. Um, same with manufactured homes on there, whatever. You can sit there, you can look at Chino Meadows and the secondary development that are bordering both of these projects and you can say, well, it fits in with those, but this is zoned AR five. We're talking about going from AR five, which is like our maximum zoning to our minimum zoning. And with conceptual plat, like I just, I think that this whole process is backwards. You know, Tom, you're gonna say, well, you have a problem with that secondary entrance, yeah. We do have a problem with that, we have a problem with brown homes a block away, putting in a hundred and sixty-two new residences that is going to tie up traffic. I don't know if any of you have elementary school age children, but every morning when I drive my son to school down one east, which is a nightmare, first of all, to try and pass a school bus on that road and not get pulled off the side because it's so decrepit. To add the amount of homes coming in from Brown, and now you're talking about another subdivision and a subdivision that now we're gonna put funds in lieu of improvements. So it should be required of the subdivider to put in the curbs and gutters, but we're gonna say you don't have to do that until we're ready. No, how about you wait to do this until the town infrastructure is there? It's not necessary and um, I don't care, I mean, the neighbor to the east, great, you wanna develop, fine, they'll come back through this process, but I don't think we can just look at what's to the north and what's to the south here, because those point one six zonings, you all in the previous council were in agreement that that was wrong. It was wrong for our community, that brown home development was wrong. It was wrong when Chino Meadows was approving this back in, you know, the eighties, seventies, and it's wrong now. And four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is not affordable. And I'm a real estate agent in this community, the median new list price of homes in this community last month was four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, not eight hundred. Those brown homes in Heritage Point that are on an acre with their own walls and sub decks, they're not selling at seven seventy-seven because people can't afford it. So that's a joke.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, any others? Is that it?
Sorry, no, there's no others.
Okay, we're gonna close the public hearing. Any further comments? Do we entertain motion?
Make a motion, approve ordinance two zero two three dash nine two seven.
Motion made, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Right.
Die, opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, we're gonna have to do show of hands cuz it was all mixed up. Who's in favor? Three in favor, four against. Do you need names? Sherry. Your turn.
She forgot already.
Took over for turn.
Second.
Meeting closed, thank you.
Thank you.